How you doing, Ron?
Good. Yeah, I just got back from vacation.
But you're always on vacation now.
Well, that's a good point. I just got back from time out. It's no longer vacation today. I'm still getting used to that terminology. Are you ready? Call me in order and begin with invocation.
Gracious and holy God of the universe, each of us are indebted completely to you for creating us, for putting your image within us, for marking history with your son here on this earth. Two thousand years ago, we thank you. We thank you that we live in a country where we could have primary elections today. We thank you for the privilege and responsibility that goes with being citizens of this great country. But as a gift, it's entrusted to us to be good stewards of and to look to you for your wisdom and to follow it. We thank you that your wisdom is bountiful. May we be receptive lives that take that wisdom as the life-giving counsel it is. Continue to lift up our city council to you. We do thank you for our greater Staples area that we get to be citizens in and may we be faithful in that. In Jesus's name, amen.
Go ahead and start, go ahead and recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Bring on to the next item of business, which is to approve the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of our July twenty-third meeting and the payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion by John and a second by Doug. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That brings us to item number five. Open a public hearing for the 2025 through the 2029 capital improvement plan.
We have any public here for the public hearing, but we'll kind of run through the CIP as it sits right now. Again, the CIP basically is a five-year planning document. As we've talked about before, there's a lot more detail in 2025 than there is in 2029, given it's five years away. You know, there's some standard items that we tend to put in every single year, whether it's street overlays or, you know, concrete or, you know, that type of thing. The kind of repetitive items that we do. But so I'll, I'll kind of go through and, you know, point out, you know, some of the bigger items that are items that are in there all the time so that we can have conversations about them. Try to color code everything as best we can so we can pick out, you know, the gray is basically our public safety, our police and fire type stuff up on the top. One of the, one of the bigger items in the 2025 item is warning siren replacement. I think I mentioned to the council that we were successful at getting Sourcewell Impact funding. And I know that we're also looking at putting in funding requests for some additional funding and working with federal warning systems. You know, right now we have three warning sirens in town. You know, one by the north sub, one up by the intersection Prairie Avenue and Airport Road, and one over by the 12th Street lift station. And, you know, trying to do a little bit of assessment on that. Okay, at those three locations, what kind of coverage do we currently have? And also, what kind of coverage would we have if we installed new ones? All of our sirens are old. The, what was he saying, the 12th Street one? He thinks it's probably like fifty, sixty years old. But it's still working as we, as we sit here. But one, one thing with their sound plan that they've put together, you know, kind of showing based on the, the size of the siren and, you know, are they omnidirectional or, or what? But to do, you know, basically a couple of the bigger ones at Prairie and Airport and at the substation and a smaller one. And we're waiting for the plan to incorporate this, but thinking about possibly putting it down in the, in the neighborhood of the south substation. Because our current ones don't really reach over towards Ernie's, don't quite pick up all of like Timberlake Hotel area. And it kind of pushes that higher decibel into that southeast part of town. But otherwise, the, you know, the hundred and thirty decibel one actually does a good job. It extends beyond the border, both north and south. So that's, you know, one item that we do have in 2025.
So that will have, that will happen next year?
Yeah, there's a possibility, you know, we had, we had some in 2024, you know, where we had talked about it. But I'm guessing it'll be a 25 project. I don't know what the, what the lead time is on ordering them. But I think with the exception of installing a new pole, if we had to put in a new pole, that's something that could happen this winter or early spring. Within Park and Rec and the Green, you know, we've got playground equipment. We're not looking to do a playground in 25, but basically want to, you know, start building that fund back up with the intent of every other year doing a playground until all of our playgrounds are in good shape. Same thing, picnic tables, garbage cans. I've got fifteen thousand in here for caboose painting, hoping to get funding through Sourcewell Match Grant for that. Fifteen thousand is a guess at this point. I haven't been able to get the guy from Wadena over to look. It needs to be sandblasted and painted. So that, that number might change, but that would be a 2025 project if we got the funding. Twenty twenty-five would also be storm shelter construction. Continue to work with, now with FEMA on technical review, which, you know, the folks at Homeland Security or Emergency Management tells me is a good sign if it's that far. So now they're digging into the details. Most of it is code-related. You know, how many restrooms, you know, all that kind of stuff. And demonstrating that that has been thought about. In the Yellow Street, a lot of standard items. You know, one, I guess a couple of things that we don't have in here pretty much every year, every other year is, is the Ventrack. Please, right now, we have been doing sidewalks with the John Deere, ten twenty-five John Deere. Can't remember what year that is, Scott. Five, six, six or seven years old, probably? But starting to get breakdowns on it and looking to replace that while there's still some value with our current one. Ventrack, you know, I don't think we're a hundred percent, you know, know that that's the model that we would go with, but some type of sidewalk cleaning machine, you know, either blower or, or broom.
That's the one that has the big brew, that big sweeper that you put on it, or is that?
Yeah, there's a variety of attachments you can put on. You know, you can put, you know, they do have mowers, snow blowers, brooms, but they're, they're articulating, you know, so you can really get them tight. If, if the Ventrack is, is the way we would end up going. Then the hot box, we talked about this, I think, at the last meeting or the meeting before that. Basically, instead of trying to put cold mix into potholes and pack it down, hot box basically, you can put that cold mix in, heat it up, you know, to where it's more like, you know, a hot mix, batuminous, get a better patch. Got community center improvements in 2025. Within the light fund, the red. You know, we've got the kind of a final shot with AMI load control. We've got a little bit in for grip grant, if we're awarded that this fall. We've got generation, basically some design and bidding. You know, I know that there's been a lot, you know, a lot of talk about generation. Just because it's on here does not mean we're committed to doing it. But if it's not on here, if a year from now we decide that we're all comfortable moving forward, that makes that a lot more difficult. But, you know, you've got the CIP, you've got the budget. And then ultimately, there's a whole bunch of agreements that we would have to approve at the council level related to the reserve capacity stuff with Missouri River, you know, all of that. Underground improvements, you know, working to put more and more of our system underground as opposed to overhead. We've got a lot of stuff, areas like up between Seventh and Eighth Street where there's not a, you know, not a improved alley. We're just operating on easements there in people's backyards, tough to get in and out, that type of thing. Transformer replacement. I think last year we started actually putting a line item in, in our budgets for transformers because they have gotten to be so expensive. And the lead times for them have really, really increased over, over the last three years. So sixty thousand in there for that. An item that's not on there every year is poles. But that would be one truckload of poles. Better off getting by the truckload than ordering one at a time. So saves on the, on the shipping. Pickup truck, if we can get it. The, the blue gets us into water, you know, some AMI stuff. Air conditioning, we've had issues at our AC down at the water plant. Get that taken care of. Water department trucks, you know, same caveat as the previous one. Pump elbow and retail, I can't talk tonight, elbow and rail at the water plant. And then looking to start doing water meter replacement. As water meters age, they don't read accurately. And it's been a long time since we did a full scale. So looking at doing, you know, multiple years of, of water meters to get those updated. Then the sewer, some safety grates for the lift stations. The little man crane. If you go down to the, you know, the wastewater plant, we've got these big basins and not a good way to get somebody out if there was, if there was trouble. Probably the same for lift stations. Chlorine tank, safety kit, manhole lining. Rather than replacing manholes, be able to basically go in and do the epoxy coating. We did two this year. So we, we've got a, quite a number of the old brick manholes in place out there and that locks everything together pretty good. So good luck with that. Purple, kind of a new color. There's no legend for it up on top because it includes so many different, different items. But that would be the remainder of the Second Street and then south side underground improvements. Related to that, we have been tracking, you know, Scott's asked the guys at Dell to start tracking I and I, inflow and infiltration. Because on the, on the scoring sheet for PFA funding, you know, when we, when we put in for the projects last time, we got the water side, you know, the drinking water side, but we did not reach a fundable range on the, on the wastewater side. And part of that is because we have a brand-new wastewater treatment plant. And there's a ton of points to be had if your plant is, you know, getting, you know, MPCA fines and all that kind of stuff, which of course we aren't with our new one. But another area where there's, there's points to be had is on the I and I. If your collection system has cracks, joint separations, different things like that that either allow rainwater or groundwater to get into it, you know, that goes, you know, there's two things on that. But, you know, one, all of that water continues to flow, goes to lift stations, gets pumped into the, into the treatment plant. And, you know, you're basically paying to treat fresh rainwater or groundwater. So that's not a good thing. But if you have joint separations that cracks, you know, liquid doesn't only flow one direction. You know, so that's a pretty good indicator that, that there may be, you know, leakage out of those pipes. So that, you know, I think that's, you know, factored in their scoring. So we think that we're going to be able to get some additional points and maybe able to get into that fundable range for, for next year. All of that's been submitted. We, we did look at that last year, but it was pretty dry at that time. But with all the rain that we've had this year, we're seeing, seeing an increase in that I and I. So just keep your fingers crossed you're going to get that so we can get these projects moving. The VAC and jetter, that would be kind of an all public works departments to deal with, you know, sucking out, you know, material for utility, potholing, jetting sewers, that type of thing. Airport, a couple of projects that we anticipate for next year. And, you know, all of the, the funding process for all this stuff seems like it takes forever. But the arrival, departure, windows and exterior roofing and siding, T-hanger door maintenance, basically pulleys, cables, belts, and kind of the bearings, the guide bearings, go through all of the existing T-hangers. And, and then at the police station, City Hall, basically would look at continuing with painting and start doing some carpet in the highway areas. So it's hard to believe, but we're coming up on fifteen years for this building and I think we're at fifteen years on the police station building. So that's 2025. We jump into 2026. You know, there's a lot of similar items, you know, within Fire Department and Police Department. You know, things like radios, squad computers. You know, you, you kind of see that repetitive year after year. Their, their, that stuff is expensive and there's a lot of them. You know, so each year we're trying to put money aside so that much like, you know, there's turnout here, CPA stuff, you're not trying to fund it all in one year. So kind of little savings account. Within the street, you know, a lot of similar items. One different one in, in 26 would be some kind of epoxy coating on the street shop floor down there. You run your plow trucks with salt, sand and everything else in there. It's starting to sort of eat away a little bit. Lift station down on Dakota and Fourth Street. Now, you see the air release valves, there's two years of that. That's for the force main that runs from the lift station out at Lakewood, north on eighty-three and then all the way in. And so that's got, you know, basically a pressure release valve for the gases that are built up in there. Some more manhole lining. Got an item in 2026, Light Shop Building. That is, I'm guessing, our oldest, you know, public facility that we have. It's not size, we can't get our bucket trucks in there. But so trying to, you know, come up with a different option for that. You know, maybe that's doing something in conjunction with the street shop building or over in that area. Get all of our public works crew located in the same area.
They wouldn't be in that, that shop that they have over there by the veterans park then?
Excuse me?
They wouldn't be in the vets park in that shop over there that would be over by that?
That would be one concept. You know, the, the light department has, you know, we've got stuff obviously at the shop. There's stuff in the, on the east side of 12th Street in that whole fenced-in area with the concrete, you know, those transformers and poles and stuff there. And then a whole bunch of stuff scattered in Lone Pine. So it would be good to kind of get everything in one area, get their trucks in. But so we've, we've had that on here for a couple of years and we can start taking a little bit of a look at it. You know, again, transformers, Digger Derrick truck. Possibly in 26, cable tugger is something where we're, you know, starting to pull more and more of our own cable. And, you know, with the cable tugger, you're able to read the tension and not be snapping the pole cords and all that kind of stuff. Another generation in 2026, more community center improvements. Similar stuff out at, in the parks with picnic tables, garbage cans, playground equipment, softball field upgrade or renovation. You know, you know, no one can predict where softball is going to be at a couple of years from now, but we got it on, got it on the radar. And then in 26, the Fourth Street reconstruction listed there. And that again would be a shared joint project with Todd County. So we've got a cooperative agreement that we've got with Todd County on that project because it is a county-state aid highway. Jumping into 27, replacement of backup squad, office computers. All of our computers in the squad room are getting old. Possible replacement of the ninety-seven pumper truck. We'll see kind of where we're at as far as our reserve balance at that time. And if it's there, we can pursue it. If it's not, push back till we've got the money to pay cash for it. Street sweeper in 27. Eighth Street Electric to Underground now. It's one of the things that I was talking about before. You know, we've got, got a fair amount of stuff that's extremely difficult to get at, access, basically in people's backyards that we want to get, get buried. Got an item that's been in here for a while, the park expansion out at Dower Lake. You know, if we add acreage to Dower and, and get up to eighty acres, it throws us into a different category for state funding and DNR funding. You know, it's more of a regional park.
How, how big are we right now? Do you know?
Forty-seven, something like that. So even, you know, for years have kind of, you know, talked about that stuff to the West, but there may be some other options too. So just kind of keeping it on the radar. We got Founder Grant to do it. Be good. Jumping to 28, you know, squad stuff, mowers, underground grip. We'll find out, or supposed to find out in September, Scott, on the, on the grip grant. Another item that's been on here for a long time is amphitheater up at Empty Park. It was a concept that was, was brought up a number of years ago. The, you know, currently the band shell's kind of been rehabbed and seems to work pretty good. Somebody, if somebody remembers us in there will, maybe there'd be opportunity for an amphitheater in there out in similar location where the band shell is. Jumping to 29. You know, again, grip would still be going on and all of the other items in, in 29 there are pretty much repetitive, get into loader replacement on that back page. And, but, you know, otherwise pretty, pretty repetitive items. You know, the bioxide system that we have out by Lakewood, maybe due for replacement by then, so it's listed on here. If anybody has questions or comments or from the public?
Doesn't look like there's any public input. Should we close the public hearing then and move on to consider approval for the capital improvement plan?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
If a motion by Roy, second by Mary.
Mary.
By Mary to approve the capital improvement plan for two twenty-five through two twenty-nine. Is there any discussion?
I have, I have one thing. And it has to do with the generation. I want, I want the council to know that, that there's six point five million dollars in here slated for generation. I had a meeting with Gerald today and it was a pleasant meeting. We had a good discussion. But I didn't really get too many of my que- wow, I shouldn't say it, didn't get my questions answered. I would say that it didn't satisfy my concern about spending that much money on generation when we, I don't think we've had a, a good enough line of information that would allow me to make a good decision about whether or not we actually need it. I think we've had some discussion, but I don't, it's, it's always similar, there's a lot of unknowns. And, and when we, this document can be basically moved into budget and the first go around, we're looking at three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And, and that's for, bidding and, and whatever it is there you can see on the line. And so that would, to me, if we're going to spend three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, that would mean we're probably going to spend the rest of it. And to be honest with you, I can think of a lot of things that we could spend six point five million dollars on rather than having the security of, of a generator sitting there waiting to be pressed into service for something that I don't believe has really ever been an issue in this town. And I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time voting for this to, because of that. I think that we need to have many more discussions, a whole lot more information and before that that's something that's even put into the CIP, let alone moved into the budget. And, and I know Gerald assured me that this doesn't, because it's here, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. But I'll tell you right now, it keeps cropping up often enough that I believe that there has already been some decisions made. Or at least there's more intent of moving forward or pushing it forward than, than being maybe disclosed. I don't know. So anyway, that's, that's where I'm at and so.
But I've also seen over the years where we've put stuff on for three, four years and it dropped off.
Yeah.
We just never did it because it was just too much.
Yeah.
So I've seen that too. And this is not a thing, set thing. This is not a thing, set thing, and it has to go through us.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we haven't even spent that much time at Public Works talking about it. It was informational and, you know, the, the recommendation I would assume would come from that committee first. To having investigated it and we would never jump into a six million dollar thing without a lot of investigation and forethought and answering all those questions, so.
But I.
I agree with Roy, we have had lots of things and, um, you know, this, this doesn't say because we have it on CIP that we're moving ahead. Because we have not even talked about that, moving forward at Public Works and bringing anything more to us now.
Maybe this would be an unfair question, but is the four hundred thousand, three hundred ninety-three thousand that's in for 2025 for, um, the, uh?
In the CIP?
Yep.
Yeah, and no one's.
That's for materials and design, or materials, design and bidding. So are we gonna spend four hundred thousand to design and get materials and bid?
Not until we've decided, in my mind, we're not gonna move forward on anything and to design anything until we've decided that that's a viable program for us to invest money in.
Well, is it intention to put it in the budget?
Okay.
Doug, did they ever get you the names, the names of the communities that are already doing this?
The community center. When I first come on this board, we talked about refurbishing that commi- community center for years. And it was on there, dropped off, on there, dropped off. And now we've got funding through taxation. And so that's a long time, we've been on here for twenty-some years. So I've seen things come and go, Doug.
Yep, I have too. I worked for the city for thirty-three years and a lot of things came off, went on and came off, but.
What do you?
I have.
Here's, here's another thing I might, i- if we don't, um, if we don't investigate new things, we're gonna lose. We gotta investigate new things.
Well, investigating, yeah.
And that's what this is. If we drop it off, we're not gonna investigate.
But if we investigate with four hundred thousand, that's a lot of investigating.
But we, uh, Gerald, is it, is it on the year that is on for any particular reason? Do we have it on the CIP on the year that you have it on for any particular reason versus having it on 27?
Yeah, o- only from the standpoint of, you know, we did, uh, when Missouri modified the program and, and presented the program out to, out to its member cities. Uh, we, uh, and a number of other, uh, member cities of municipal, um, of Missouri River Energy, uh, worked with DGR, they're our engineering firm for electric stuff. Basically do a feasibility study, you know, does it even make sense to consider this? You know, they, they came back, um, you know, with, with that information and lots of spreadsheets and, you know, financial projections, all that kind of stuff. And, uh, you know, it wasn't, uh, oh God, don't run from this, uh, you know, stay away. But it's not, you know, it's not a, a cut and dry, oh my, you know, this is definitely a program we need to be in or not. And, you know, Scott and I have talked at length about this and, and we are, you know, we're, we're not to the point where we're ready to say yes, we recommend moving forward with this. And here's, here's a couple of the big, uh, questions that I have, uh, related to this. Is Missouri River talks about, you know, them actually overtime fundings between seventy and ninety percent of the, of the generation. You know, where they would, you know, for the equipment, they would pay the operator's time and they do the, anytime they call on it to cycle, pay for fuel, all that kind of stuff. But, you know, when you're talking about, you know, a nine, ten million dollar total project cost, you know, they would put money in upfront. And then over a number of years, basically pay up to that seventy to ninety percent. I wanna know, is it seventy or is it ninety or somewhere in between? So we're, uh, working on trying to get answers to that. The other piece is in Minnesota, uh, with the, um, you know, the, the clean air, uh, goals that the legislature set, um, you know, the twenty forty stuff. Although they say right now that diesel generation, you know, backup, you know, on-demand diesel generation is not, um, you know, gonna come into play on that, you know, what are the odds they can change their mind? And all of a sudden, you have a bunch of equipment sitting in the shed that you can't, uh, can't totally run. So those are two, you know, those are two of the big questions and it's, you know, I think, uh, you know, it's a risk. Now, to answer your question, Ron, about, about, uh, um, you know, does it have to be in, in twenty-five? No, I mean, if the council wants to, I don't think the, the generation program is probably gonna go anywhere, uh, from Missouri River's standpoint. If they, if enough cities jump on board and they meet that gap, um, that they're looking to meet, um, you know, by, you know, twenty other cities moving forward with the project, uh, I would say it would probably be less incentive offered, you know, for us to get into it. But, um, you know, if we, you know, if the council is more comfortable saying, okay, let's take twenty-five and push it into twenty-six and, you know, to basically give us another year, uh, to look at it. You know, we're, we're sixteen months, you know, before twenty twenty-five ends. You know, a lot of stuff can happen in there and that's why we've got it listed in twenty twenty-five. Cause as I say, if a year from now, we decide that we want to move forward and, and, you know, do that design and bidding, it's, you know, it's there in the CIP.
Place marker for us if we decide.
You know, like, like I say, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna kick and scream and dig my heels in if we want to push that back a year.
And Missouri River is wanting cities to help upfront with it. And then like you said, then they're, they're planning on paying back seventy to ninety percent of it.
Based on the amount of generation capacity.
Yeah, idea at least is that there's an upfront cost for us helping Missouri River, but then they're gonna return.
Well, and, and they, they put upfront twenty-five percent?
It, it'll be based on our capacity, be two million dollars.
So I mean, it, it, it's, there's a plan in place, but we don't know all the details of that. And like you said, you'd like to know is it seventy, is it ninety and the timetable for all that. And so there are a lot of questions to it, but, um, I guess, you know.
John, that, sorry, excuse me, that video that you sent out, is that, can we send that out to?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, it was just an informational video.
Yeah, uh, with, uh, electrical engineer that deals with the generation for.
Yeah, it was mostly above my head, so. Any, any other input I can, my question to you Doug, was when Tim was here, you asked him to provide you with the names of the other communities that have done this. Did he ever give that to you?
No, one.
Cause I would, I would be curious to see that and go and start doing some homework. So, you know, I can follow up with him or any, any of us can.
But I guess, you know, I guess, I guess what, it's a little bit, I, kind of, you know, this funding thing too. You go to a town, first off, our, our town is divided in half. And, um, the north half has no responsibility to this. Um, cause they don't have electricity. So right away we take, uh, probably, and I don't know what the ratio is between the north and south as far as, uh, um, as far as, uh, population goes, but I'm gonna guess it's fairly even, um, numbers of people. So you can take the sign out on the edge of town and divide it in half, so fifteen hundred probably, about. And, uh, and that's going to, I think, if I remember right, when, or if I heard it right, when Gerald explained it, that, that it will, the burden will fall on our electrical rates, is that what you said? So fifteen hundred people now instead of three thousand will be tasked to pay for this with most likely higher electrical rates. And, um, the other thing is, is when a company as big as Missouri River Energy System has to knock on the door of a small town and get us to pay for it, then they pay us back. Basically is what it amounts to. I, I mean, we're gonna have to sell bonds, I think, I don't know. I mean, I think that's how we'd pay for it, bonds. And, um, that kind of hamstrings us, I, I believe, a little bit because the more, what debt service we have, the, the worst, interest rates we get, I think. Isn't that kind of how it works?
Shall we, do, shall, shall we move this to twenty twenty-six? That may give you a more comfortable, Doug.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with not voting on it for this year, yeah. I don't, I don't know, I'd like to have more information and get more information and.
So we need to this year to try and answer some of your questions?
Okay.
If we could.
Thank you.
Do we, better motion in a second, then we're under the discussion of the CIP? Do we, can the motion be amended to, how?
Yeah, if there's a motion to amend.
The CIP.
To, to push that back.
So. So we have a motion to am- to amend the CIP? To move the generation line item to twenty twenty-six? Is that what, Roy?
Yep.
Yep, cause we made the original motion, so we would need to amend it.
But we vote the amendment first.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to other communities that have this in, in place and see.
We use our year to do that, we'll come back and discuss CIP again. So we have a motion from Roy second by Mary to amend the CIP.
To amend the original motion.
Original motion.
And then if, if that, if that's approved, then vote again, uh, on the original motion.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poll the same sign, motion carried. So now we'll, uh, have a vote on the amend, on the amended CIP. With the moving of the, uh, generation to twenty twenty-six. I'll need, uh, a motion.
No, we didn't vote, we amended it, so now we just.
There's already a motion.
Now we're on the original motion. We're on the original motion.
So we would need a vote on that.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, a poll the same sign.
So I, you know, I just want to commend the council, it's good discussion to have. You know, I don't think even those of us that have been dealing with, with this and trying to learn about it, I won't speak for John, uh, you know, with the ambassador program. There's, you know, there's unknowns and, and a year from now, there may still be unknowns. We can't, you know, we have no control over state or federal, um, you know, legislation and, and EPA and MPCA and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But, um.
Yeah, I was all gung ho when I first heard it and then Doug, Doug keeps bringing up more points that keep my wheels turning and make me question my original thoughts. So I mean, it's good, I'm glad he, glad he speaks up, so I.
You're gonna forward that video somehow up to?
Yeah, I can, I can forward it or they can, if I don't see.
I've got it, I can.
Awesome.
Yep.
That was from Missouri River.
Yep, yep, it's part of the ambassador, uh, just a training, uh, discussion.
Awesome. All right, move on to item number seven. Consider second reading and adoption ordinance five forty-nine regarding the sale of property.
Uh, so three weeks ago at our last meeting, uh, we gave the ordinance its first reading. Basically, you know, by our charter, we have to approve any land sale, uh, by ordinance. So this would be for, uh, all of the newly platted or, you know, the first addition to, uh, Valley View Neighborhood for those lots up there.
Take a motion, so.
Second.
First by Mary, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll the same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number eight. Consider the first reading of ordinance five fifty, amending section eighteen dash one B three and eighteen dash nine D related to public nuisances.
Uh, so, you know, this is primarily driven by grass nuisances where, um, where our, our city code basically says you can do personal service or certified mail, you know, where they have to sign for delivery of the notice. People don't come to the door to accept it. Uh, and when we do it, certified mail, a lot of times it's a month to a month and a half before we get it back that it's signed, wasn't even delivered and signed for. And, uh, so working with, with Joe, you know, basically what, you know, what can we do here? Can we go and tape it to their front door? Not without this, but, so basically what this does is for, uh, for any of the nuisances, you can still do service. You know, if they, if they come to the door, uh, you can mail it certified. And a lot of people do get the certified tomorrow, the person goes up to the door and rings the doorbell and they go out and sign for it. And they go, oh, I guess I gotta mow my lawn. The other, you know, the new option, uh, with approval of this ordinance would be, um, uh, officer during daytime hours, uh, attempt service. If it's not accepted, um, the next day they go between the hours of six and ten PM. If it's not accepted, they post it, that's considered served. So you basically take that, you know, month or month and a half process and bring it, you know, bring it down to two days. So, um, you know, I mean, a lot, a lot of these, you know, we get it back unsigned for and, you know, people mow the lawn in the meantime, but certified mail is like, I think it was nine bucks, eight and a half, nine bucks, a crack now, so.
Three levels.
It's not a cheap endeavor, so. Anyway, this would, you know, be the first reading, uh, a couple of weeks from now, we give it the second reading, then we'd be able to, uh, move forward and start utilizing that process.
So they tape it to the front door or something?
Yeah, in a conspicuous location, yeah.
Snap a picture or something showing that they left it there?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I think this will, will help facilitate that kind of stuff.
I move it to adoption.
Second. Motion by Roy, second by Blake. All those affected in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll the same sign, carried. Board number nine, uh, consider approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school resource officer agreement with Staples Mountain School District.
So a couple of months ago, we did the CLC, uh, SRO agreement. This is basically the same thing for the Staples Mountain School District, uh, pretty much, you know, we think that's changed and here are the dates and the numbers. Recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, second by Mary-Joe, is our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll the same sign, motion carried. Bring us item number ten, consider request from Wahoo Valley Area MBHA to conduct a raffle on October twelve, twenty twenty-four at Timberlake Hotel.
A copy of their application is in your packet. Again, for any kind of gambling permit, we need to approve it or before it gets sent to the state, so.
What are they having there, Gerald?
October twelfth?
Yeah, Timberlake Hotel, I think is where the drawing will be.
Yeah, on October twelfth.
Come here, Minnesota Deer Hunters Association.
Deer hunters, okay.
I'll make a motion for the, uh, requests from Wahoo Valley.
Second.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll the same sign.
Aye.
All right, item number eleven is to consider setting a date for the twenty twenty-five budget workshop.
So every year for the last several years, we've done just a separate, you know, maybe a couple hour meeting over like lunch, to kind of go through some preliminary budget stuff, uh, have conversation. And I'm wondering if number one, everybody wants to do that again? And secondly, when do you want to do it? So, um.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's good. Yeah, I think it's good.
Thinking if we wanna jump, um, next week might be a little early, but wait, maybe we should do something like, uh, Thursday, Thursday the twenty ninth, something like that?
That's my district board meeting day, and I will be in Arkansas.
I'll be in Pittsburgh.
What's that?
Pittsburgh, Arkansas.
I'm working after that day.
Okay, so, all right, here we go. That's why it's good to try and do this when everybody's here, so, um. What about, I was looking at next Thursday, that doesn't work for me. Uh, we could jump into the first week of September, like, uh, Thursday the fifth? No?
Thursday, what'd you say, I'm sorry?
Thursday the fifth, how about? I'd like to try to avoid Wednesdays over lunch if I could. I can, you know, if that's where we end up, I can pass off.
A longer second?
Somebody else, but what's that?
How long of a time period are you thinking?
A couple hours.
Did you say, did you say the third? Is that a date that was thrown, just thrown up?
Uh, I did not throw that date out, but that would be a date that would work, um.
September third?
Yeah, day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
At noon?
Noon.
Yeah.
Could that work for you, Blake?
He can get his little mistletoe run.
Thursday?
John works, Blake works, but the rest of us are kind of available.
I work. I just don't show up to meetings.
Doug just got himself in trouble. Great. Okay.
Just turn for a water can?
Third.
Can I approach that?
At noon?
You bring your case, Stephen?
There you go.
At noon or eleven, what is it?
Uh, did you say noon, Joe?
Noon?
Thursday the third, Tuesday the third, Tuesday the third.
Tuesday the third.
We're gonna have in two thirds on, in September. Tuesday. Tuesday. September.
Tuesday, September third at twelve noon here. And it will be a uh, a workshop in preparation for budget. All right. Well, that brings us to committee reports, and we'll start with the Staples Economic Development Authority.
I'll do it unless you want to, Ron. All right, I'm ready to go. Uh, Staples E D A met on Tuesday, July twenty-third. Um, had a bit of a backlog of items that we ran through. Uh, it was our annual meeting, did uh, election of officers. Um, hard fought campaign by everybody, but, uh, everybody stayed right, basically in the position that they had before. Um, an item that, um, that we wanna make the council aware of, uh, the Economic Development Authority about fifteen, sixteen years ago bought a chunk of property over on the southeast side of town. Um, I always refer to it as the Fern Swenson property. Uh, and we utilized that property basically to mine sand. And the sand from that area filled in a lot of that area where Ernie's and the Plaza uh is over there now. Basically did a wetland swap, um, because a lot of the stuff on the south side of Highway ten there was wetland, so we did a mitigation project. Uh, we found out that economic development authorities can only hold land for fifteen years before it becomes taxable property once again. And, um, so, um, you know, when we got our property tax uh statements for this year, the E D A is gonna end up paying property tax on that. Got ahold of Chris Oden, he informed me about the statute, the fifteen year thing, so, um, you know, talked at the E D A meeting about it, and, um, E D A has to hold a public hearing uh prior to the transfer of property. Uh, but, uh, we're proposing to transfer that property from the E D A to the city of Staples, so we don't end up paying property tax on the swamp for the next fifteen years, so.
So we're inheriting swamp, though?
Yeah, yeah. It was, it it turned out that it was a a very beneficial deal when it came time to, you know, to, uh, deal with that wetland stuff down there on that corridor, but, uh, uh, don't wanna pay tax on it forever. Um, approved the, uh, C L C agreement, uh, for the, uh, E D A property and lease agreement out there. Uh, did a couple of, uh, donations or, you know, approved them for, um, twenty twenty five, the Economic Alliance and also the Initiative Foundation. Um, Lucas updated, uh, everybody on the the Small Cities Development Grant. Then we also talked about the, um, Blandon Foundation, uh, grant and some of the wayfinding signage. And, um, you know, the board, uh, recommended that we kinda hold on that and do some more talking on it. We did find out that Blandon will extend that, uh, grant application, so. Uh, like, we've got a, another year to get that figured out and the money spent, so. And that was about what we had for action items. Questions, I'll try to answer them.
If I have any questions? Thanks, Gerald, move on to public works.
We met today, um, our one item of new business was, uh, if you notice downtown in some of the ped ramps where there's brick, there's, some of the bricks have either fallen in or some of them have deteriorated, you know, possibly from the salt. So that's becoming an issue that we're gonna need to to remedy. So we gave a couple ideas, either replacing it with colored concrete or perhaps taking some brick, maybe from like right out here and then putting that as replacements in the downtown areas and then doing concrete here, you know, where it's a little more traveled and more downtown, um, commercial area, you know. So those are discussions that we had, and I'll have to look at some different options, but. Other than that, there was just some project updates that you can see in the in the minutes here. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Scott, I've had a couple people ask me why these new things are being put on the meter, whatever they're called. Is it on water, so they can drive around and check it, or?
They they don't even have to, they won't even have to drive around, it's just, um, they won't, they will no longer read meters once these are all done. Plus, it it helps with, uh, it's, it can be instant reading. Um, it can help us, like, our customer, we've had customers call and and say that, you know, my bill was high.
Right.
And we can look up their bill on our software and, you know, like, I had one gal that was just insisting she did not have a running toilet, you know. And I said, your water ran at two in the morning, you know, you can, we can see that. It's, so it's things like that too, you know.
And then I run, um, somebody messaged wanted to know where will they, when you're working on course, when will they be to track? They're hoping that they.
They, uh, their early discussion is that they'll do that in in sections, so the detours will change as they go. So, you know, Fifth Street would be a likely one for for a good portion of it. But they'll do it, they're, they won't block it all off at once, it'll, it'll come in in pieces. So it'll move with the, the detours will move with the project.
Yeah, and we had the node installation today, that was fast.
Yeah.
It didn't take them very long.
Yep, he could do.
Twenty-five in a day.
Twenty-five a day, yep, is what their their plan is.
Yeah, and I found the right thing.
Yep.
I guess as long as we're on that subject. Hey, on our, are we talking water meters or electric meters?
Water meters.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I'm scheduled to have mine done, I think, on the twenty-second.
Okay.
But I don't, we didn't get a paper on our, you know, I didn't get one on my shed, and I didn't get one on, on our rental house. Would they be equipped to do all three of them, or?
I will check into that, cause I know you, um, well, you turned those in for the lead things, but, uh, yeah, I don't know, maybe you only got one letter and so they only only scheduled to do for one, but I'll, I can.
Well, see, like, the, well, my building has got, you know, it's a mine, but our rental house, the renters.
Oh, okay.
Called Sheriff's Water. So I only got one, we only got one from the house, we scheduled it.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, if you wanna reach out to me tomorrow.
Sure.
And and remind me, and then I'll just, uh, because we got, as it says here in the minutes, we have a hundred and fifty appointments to make up. They're, they send out three letters and after that, then they just assume that they're not gonna get a response. So they got three hundred and forty-three responses and we were hoping for five hundred, so.
We had gotten on what kind of pipe we have in the house.
Yeah.
We got that, and we sent that pictures. All right.
Any other questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. We'll move on to open forum. Anyone, uh, needs to speak during an opportunity of open forum? Not move on to city administrator's report.
Um, just a couple of things. Natural layout, um, it was very successful, graduated. Um, we had a particular, we had a property group that worked with that. So, uh, with their kids' activities. We had, uh, Cass County, Cod County, Wamena County, Sheriff's Department, D N R, Tasked Beach Officer, D N R Forestry, the Department of Oriole, here, ambulance, helicopter, also came, uh, Forest Region helicopter. Which is why we did that year, so we can save a little child to help. Um, had, uh, you know, great turnout from our local police department, and, uh, three hundred hot dogs and dill bars. So, had a lot of positive comments, location also creates a great opportunity for us to show up and help.
Well, and the, and the public works for taking our snow equipment out of there so we could use that building. That was just fabulous too, cause we didn't have to worry about weather and God provided a wonderful evening for that. Uh, the week, that was the only nice night, so. It was, it was just a happy time. Kids had a great time with all their activities and, you know, and people sat in there at the tables and visited, so. It it met our expectation plus.
Fire Department had, I don't know, five, six different weeks there, side by side, and, you know, on the trucks. So, yeah, it was a good thing, seeing great winters. Maybe we'll do it again there next year.
Well, I'm sure it will.
The motivation, uh, at least once a year, going to get that building heated up, so.
Yeah, one of my members wants to watch the floor before we have it, so. So you go, you go for that.
So, and, you know, uh, lastly, you know, basically, remember it was this weekend. Um, so, uh, we're kind of final prep of, uh, Jordan and, uh, and Remi are around, they're there on fire, ready at ten o'clock Saturday morning. Roger will be doing Julie, and then work, they're working Nelson. By the wall, Julie.
Who that we adjourned?
Motion and a second to adjourn, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, being adjourned.